Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome back. Happy New Year. I call the City Council Committee the whole meeting for Wednesday, January 3rd. Sorry, January 4th, I think, to order. A lot of things to think about, hopefully all positive things as we move forward, but a lot of things going on. So we'll take a moment of silence for you to think about whatever it is you would like to think about. Thank you. Alderman Gripp, if you'd please lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Mr. Crupp, please call the roll for tonight. Dunn.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee. Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Cornett.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobin.
Here.
And Ortiz.
Here.
Nine present, your honor. Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone. I, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole, again, like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody viewing on any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your opinions, you're sharing them with all your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire, I know we all share, to make Davenport a better place, especially for the folks in here. Remind your cellphone, if you just put it on silent or turn it off simply, that it does get in the way of someone talking. If you want to address the council on any specific item, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, ward, or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please keep your comments to five minutes. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. City Administrator Spiegel, any updates tonight?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Very good. So we'll go to the public hearings. We have two, one in community development and one in Public Works. The first one is community development. Alderman Gripp will lead that. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, your honor. I open the public hearing for case REZ 22-08, being the request of Ecumenical Housing Development Group to rezone 1112 Bridge Avenue from R4C Single Family and Two-Family Central Residential District to RMF Multi-Family Residential District. Is there anyone from the public who is here to comment on this public hearing? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Mike Miller, 902 Bridge, Third Ward. I've interrupted another engagement I have to get here just to make my position that I'm, I stand opposed to this change. Many reasons I won't be able to stay for the later comments, and there's other, many other people here that will go through that, that include my opinion on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Juliana Buckaloo, and thanks for hearing me. I'm opposed to this change, and in a little while, I'll tell you a little bit more about that, but I'm also Third Ward, and my address is 1206 East River Drive.
My name is Lamar Buckaloo, so I'm also 1206 East River Drive, Third Ward, and I'm also here tonight to express my concerns about the rezoning of this property to multifamily, and I'll give a little bit more detail of that, about that when we get into the community development section. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Kyrill Dowd. I live at 812 Bridge Avenue. I oppose the rezoning request for the property at 1112 Bridge Avenue to multifamily for the following reasons. Number one, I feel that introducing more high-density dwellings in this area would potentially destabilize the neighborhood. Number two, approving this rezoning request would set a very bad precedent moving forward when other development entities seek to follow this same path. Number three, I am concerned about the long-term negative impact in the event this property changed ownership and then wanted more than three units. Would there be limits and conditions set in order to prohibit this growth to even higher density in the future? Number four, allowing the conversion of single-family or two-family properties into multifamily properties would begin to dismantle, dismantle all the time, work, and money expended in the major rezoning of the city of Davenport completed in 2018. I respectfully ask that you deny this rezoning request. Thank you for your consideration and attention.
Good evening. I'm Diane Franken. I live at Prospect Terrace, which is Fifth Ward. I'm against the redistricting. As a taxpayer, I know that the city spent a lot of money going through that process, and I think it should be left as is.
Hello, my name is Karen Miranda. My home's located at 920 Bridge Avenue. I'm in the Third Ward. I wanted to express my opposition to the rezoning of 1112 Bridge, mainly because I feel it would destabilize the neighborhood and also it sets a bad precedent for the historic neighborhood that we live in. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jesse Yates. I live at 1008 Mississippi Avenue, which is in the Fifth Ward, and I'm here to express my opposition to the rezoning of 1112 Bridge Avenue. My family and I bought property in this neighborhood almost 10 years ago. We certainly picked this neighborhood because of its diversity and it's, the fact that it's got a lot of folks around and different structures and that, and that type of thing, but we think that this will, as already stated, will be a detriment to the neighborhood. It's already a great neighborhood, you know, why do we need to change the zoning from what it is today to where, to something different? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council and Mayor. My name is Sam Moyer. I'm the Executive Director of Ecumenical Housing Development Group, and with me tonight is Jim Richardson, our former Board President and current Property Chair. Ecumenical Housing has been an important provider of quality, affordable housing in the city of Davenport for nearly 30 years. During this time, we've built a solid track record of restoring blighted properties and stabilizing neighborhoods. Ecumenical Housing has created and maintained green spaces, built playgrounds. We support Community Garden on West Sixth. We, we have partnered with YMCA, Family Resources, Head Start, CHC, and other organizations to provide educational and recreational opportunities for youth. Recently, with the city's help, we were able to purchase 24 of their affordable housing units. These units, along with 21 others, including the property in question, are part of a $10.8 million tax credit package that will allow for 21 structures and 45 units to be completely modernized with new roofs, new doors, new siding, windows, HVAC, and interior remodeling, and on and on and on. The property at 1112 Bridge is a critical and essential part of these tax credits. This property is a former group home, a former daycare that has been blighted and is an eyesore to the neighborhood. Our desire is to convert this building from its current use and to make it into three apartments. We are currently projecting just over $600,000 in renovations to this site alone. The end result will be a very nice building. It'll be ADA accessible with two four-bedroom and two, and one two-bedroom apartments. It will have off-street parking for each unit. The property is on nearly half an acre, which leaves plenty of room for families to enjoy outdoor activities. It's not our plan, nor would we be allowed to add beyond the three units or the current footprint of the building during the federal tax credit program, which won't expire until after 2040. And if, and if for some odd reason there was a transfer to another organization, the federal tax program is in place, and, and any other organization would have to abide by that as well. I've read the public comments, and I understand their concern, and I feel strongly and confidently that we're going to bring increased stability to this neighborhood, decrease traffic and parking issues compared to its previous uses, and to increase the attractiveness of the area. Our management partner, Newberry Living, is also well-known to the city of Davenport. Their maintenance standards and their tenancy standards are very high. In the few months that we've owned this property, grass has been well-cared-for, and for the first time in years, trees and shrubs have been trimmed and properly maintained, and this is only going to get better with time. Our interest is in providing excellent, stable home for three families. We want this to be a safe neighborhood and for the quality of the buildings in the neighborhood to be improved and to be maintained. We're confident that we're going to make excellent neighbors and that we'll continue to contribute to the betterment of the neighborhood. Thank you again for consideration of this request. Thank you.
Thank you all. Is there anyone else who's here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. The next one is under Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, your honor. Open the public hearing on the specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the CY 2023 Pedestrian Curb Ramp Retrofit Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. If there's a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and back to you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Next area is petitions and communications from council and mayor. Anybody have a comment tonight? Seeing none, we'll move to the four areas of discussion. We have community development, public safety, public works, and finance. The first area is community development. Again, Alderman Gripp will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, your honor. Item number one is a third consideration ordinance for case ORD 22-01, being the request of RY Holdings LLC to amend Table 17.08-1, use matrix of the municipal code of Davenport, Iowa to allow dwelling single-family as a permitted use in the RMF multifamily residential zoning district. Is there anyone from the public who is here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Our second item is a second consideration ordinance for case REZ 22-07, being the request of High Properties on behalf of Shamrock Properties LC to rezon approximately 104.57 acres of land bound by Veterans Memorial Parkway, Eastern Avenue, Interstate 80, and Jersey Ridge Road from SAG Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District, R4 Single Family and Two-Family Residential District, and RMF Multifamily Residential District, and C2 Corridor Commercial District. Is there anyone from the public who is here to comment on this rezoning? Any comments from the council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a second consideration ordinance for case ROW 22-05, being the request of Corn Belt Capital LLC to vacate unimproved Wrightavoy located south of Research Parkway and to the west of Interstate 80, Airport Industrial Park 12th Edition. Is there anyone in the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number four is a first consideration ordinance for case REZ 22-08, being the request of Ecumenical Housing Development Group to rezon 1112 Bridge Avenue from R4C Single Family and Two-Family Central Residential District to RMF Multifamily Residential District. Is there anyone from the public who is here to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Hi again, my name is Juliana Buckaloo again, Third Ward, 1206 East River Drive, and thank you for hearing me. I strongly believe that 1112 Bridge Avenue should be kept as a duplex. We have worked hard in our neighborhood. We understand it is a mix of rental and owner occupied, and that's great, but the zoning ordinance rewrite of 2018 was supposed to help preserve and stabilize these central urban neighborhoods as they are, and it was supposed to prevent the density from increasing even more. We're scared of the precedent this sets. If it's done once, the next group uses this as an example of how zoning exceptions can be made. After 16 years, which I guess is 2040, as Ecumenical Housing said, I think that would be the year, the owner or any future owner can apply to have more than three units, and this will be likely, as it is now multifamily, so why not? Once the line is crossed, it sets a precedent, precedent. I strongly believe it should stay as a duplex and not have the zoning change to multifamily. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name and address or ward, please.
Sure. Again, thank you again. My name is Lamar Buckaloo. I'm in 1206 East River Drive, Third Ward, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the council and the mayor as well about this property. And the first thing I'd like to say is, any, anything that we're saying and with the group that's here too, that's, that's making these comments, this is not about any, any kind of negative thoughts about ecumenical housing. Everything that they've just said, we completely agree with. They've done a great job, and they're already neighbors in the neighborhood. We have no issue at all with what ecumenical housing is doing in general. Our, our issue is with this, the policies around and the precedent being set by changing the zone for these properties and, and then changing that from, I mean, multifamily is my understanding, could go up to 14 units. I know they're not requesting that because they're putting a self-restriction of around, of three units is all they want on there. R4C allows two units, and so we were, we would like to see that just maintained, the status quo, because as was mentioned, this city spent a lot of money and a lot of effort to try to bring some continuity to the zoning process back in 2018 and 2019 in that timeframe. When we moved back here in 2012, we moved to House on Bridge, 820 Bridge, that was a fourplex at the time, and then we started to, to bring it down to a single-family home. So we wanted to, you know, move the apartments and just have it classified as a single-family home. This was not that simple of a process to do at the time. I mean, we had to remove, you know, plumbing from the different apartments and those types of things, and, and I know the city had good reasons for asking people to do that because they didn't want to get it reclassified and then have people, you know, renting apartments out too. So, so we endured some of that to get it reclassified, but we were also told at the time, if you downsize, if you go down to residential zoning, then you can never go back up. All right? So we were told that once you come down from multifamily or anything more than a duplex, you can never go back up. So that was something that, you know, we, we thought about, and it's like, well, that's, that's okay, we're fine with that. We, we're wanting to make it a single-family house. But then that, that puts the question, you know, in our head about, well then, why is then this property going to be allowed to then upzone, if you will, to multifamily, even though they have some voluntary restrictions? As was said, when we moved here 10 years ago, 12 years, a little over 10 years ago, the neighborhood was coming out of a difficult time, and we had, we had, you know, some crime in the neighborhood, and you guys probably all remember, the whole city did, you know, back in, and, and we had a different events going on in the neighborhood, but our neighborhood, the Neighborhood Association, the East Bluff Neighborhood Association, which I participated in and served in as president at, at different times, has worked hard to provide, you know, a stable neighborhood for everyone, for all families, whether they're living in single-family housing, multifamily housing, apartments, or whatever. We're, we want everyone to have a safe, stable neighborhood, and again, this, the, the issues that we have are not with ecumenical housing in any way, shape, form, or manner. It's about the precedent that's being set of the zoning change and what that might mean for other properties, not only in our area, but in other areas of the city. So with that, I think I'll, I think I'll finish my comments, but thank you very much for listening.
Is there anyone else from the public? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Again, Jesse Yates, 1008 Mississippi Avenue, Fifth Ward. The two folks in front of me spoke a lot about the zoning stuff, so I won't spend a lot of time on that, just a little bit about the character of the neighborhood. I'm also the Vice President of East Bluff Neighborhood Association, and, and I've heard many stories from the neighborhood of, you know, this buying homes and then turning them into single families and going through this process of changing them and the zoning requirement, and hearing the same story. You can never go back, right? Once you make this change, you can never go back. And so I want to reiterate that there's other neighbors in the neighborhood that would be happy, that we can get here to have that conversation with the council and share that. I want to go more to the softer side, the, the character of the neighborhood. The character of the neighborhood is multi, is this multifamily, dual-family, single-family mixture of homes, right? It makes our neighborhood. My kids, I've raised them here for eight years, nine years now. They play in the neighborhoods with some of the kids in, around the neighborhood, right? There's this big diversity, wonderful area of diversity, and we talk about that in East Bluff, right? We want to maintain that. We're not trying to change it, but it will change it. If we change the zoning, it's going to open it up for other homes to change, it's going to open up and, and backward track on what the city's already done from its valuable work in terms of stabilizing what we thought was a great zoning requirement. There's softer things like where the car's going to be. You know, we walk our dogs around the neighborhood. I see our neighbors walking around with five-gallon buckets and trash bags, picking up trash in the neighborhood, off the street, right? Trying to keep it clean and that kind of stuff. And I have no doubt, again, back to what Mr. Lamar said, you know, very reputable organization. We have no doubt, and we're very glad that somebody made the investment in the property. We're just asking to keep it dual-family and not to take it to that next step because it's just a slippery slope of what happens in the future and what happens with adjacent properties. Because you heard from the planning and zoning, it fits, they're saying it fits with the character of the neighborhood. You know, later, as future sessions, we can talk a little bit about the momentum of the neighborhood, and I'll bring some, some data around that. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on this item? All right. Seeing none, we'll go to council comments. We'll start with Alderwoman Dickman.
All right, thank you, your honor. Well, I pushed my, my button before some of the residents had talked about that they've already knew the Ecumenical Housing Development Group and Newberry Housing, and I wanted to kind of put in a word for them, just the experience that I had with them coming and doing a development in my ward, actually, before I got there, but I've heard enough story and done the history to know that, you know, it, it was not great before, and, you know, there's never a magic ingredient, but they were there at the right time and place, and it went from, you know, being a neighborhood that, you know, lots of problems and calling, calling the police and all that kind of stuff to just kind of mends itself now, but it sounds like everybody already knows that they're great to work with and they're very responsible. I, I do hear everyone's concerns about the slippery slope thing, and I, I, it's very, you know, it's, we're weighing all the different options here. I, I do think that hopefully we can find a way to kind of match the, the whole character of the neighborhood conversation with, you know, I, I'm hoping that whatever they have in mind can also blend with that plan, that, you know, just having a slightly higher density does not necessarily inherently bring trash and noise and crime and any of that kind of stuff. So that's all I'll add for now. Thank you.
Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. I'm going to be wanting to talk to a few people in the time I have. I would like, Ms. Berkeley, could you? I, I would like if you could come, please, and talk to us generally about when the zoning process that took place, because a lot of this centers around what the current zoning is and why the current zoning is what the zoning is and why that's important. Could you talk about the, the process that was used when we were doing the rezoning process and why this was so important to restrict what was permitted there?
Sure. Laura Berkeley, Development Neighborhood Services. Unfortunately, I was not on staff at the time when the zoning code was redone. What I have been told is that there was a specific zoning district added, the R4C, which helped preserve some of the neighborhood character. That was one of the discussions as part of that.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll, I'll talk about it then. I don't think there's anybody else who is here on zoning then. Okay, I'm, I'm happy to talk about it. And so the reason why, you know, the reason why this zoning was changed in, in these areas, in R4C particularly, was that if you go through the history, the city's history in housing and how the city grew to its 67-square-mile area, if you look through abstracts in the, usually south of Locust mostly, you will see again and again where other city staffs, other city councils said, okay, we'll make this a multifamily district. And so that allowed what had been basically single-family homes and some, and some apartments, there were some apartments there certainly, but it allowed people to take houses, turn single-family homes, structures that were meant for one thing and structures for multifamily. And it did begin to destabilize the neighborhood, and, and it did over the years. Now, that wasn't the intention of those staffs or the city councils that approved that, but that's what happened, and it is, we're not the only city that it happened in. But it did happen. And so when the zoning, the ability to rezon, to do a zoning, and I think it was since the 1970s, since we had done rezoning in the city, there were many things that were changed, there were many reasons for it, but one, particularly for this in R4 was, R4C was because there had been so much destabilization caused by this sort of sometimes absentee owners or things like that. That's what happens often when you have that situation. And so the limit was placed on R4C, and this goes back, it's not anything recent, it goes back to when it was approved, is that we can only allow, we only allow duplexes and we only allow single-family homes, and that's it. There is no multifamily in the R4C district and, and others as well, but there, there is a reason for that, and there's a history for that. And so I appreciate certainly, and I remember as an alderman, when we were going through the zoning and I was meeting with different people in Third Ward, we talked about this. We talked about, okay, this is why this is happening, this is a good thing for, because most of, certainly Third Ward, is R4C. So that is the reason why that was put, and, and it was fought for and pushed for. I did, the Fifth Ward Alderman at that time also pushed for this pretty hard, and others as well, and so it was certainly something that was approved. So I did want to talk to Mr. Buckaloo. If you, could you come back and talk to us a little bit more? Thank you, sir. Could you talk a little bit more about, so the process that you guys went through? So you, you bought one property on Bridge, and it was multifamily. Was it occupied when you bought it, or?
Well, actually, it had been a, a property that was owned by my father-in-law since the early 70s, and it had been occupied by my mother-in-law and, and some of my wife's siblings through that period of time, and then also had those apartments where there were rentals in there as well. This property, this house was actually built in the late 1800s, and during the 1930s, when a lot of these old homes went through this period of time during the Depression, where for financial reasons, people had to put them into apartments to be able to save their, their living space. This property was one of those. And so we, we bought it from our father, my father-in-law when we still lived in North Carolina at the time, and then within the year, we moved here and we moved into that property as well, and then we started the process of, of converting it to a single-family home.
Right. And when you moved there 10 years ago, what was the makeup of the neighborhood? Can you remember any?
Well, I mean, it was, as I said, at that time period, it was, you know, our, our city in general, you know, from the downtown, the, the city has, has grown in so many ways and for the better in the last 10 years in development and, and certain areas of the downtown have, have. And in certain areas of the downtown have really improved. And in our neighborhood in particular as well, at the time when we first moved there, I mean, there was a, a drug house, you know, it was a duplex right across the street from us. And we were the, I think my kids were one of the, two of the few kids that were in the neighborhood at the time. And, you know, it was just, it was challenged. There were some violent, you know, some fighting in the streets at different times, that kind of stuff, just with different neighborhood type things. In the last 10 years, though, for lots of different reasons, I think, the family, a family type nature of the neighborhood, there's more kids in the neighborhood. There's more, you know, neighborhood gatherings in, in the neighborhood with just general, you know, I guess it's just all moved in that direction. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
And did you feel like there was sort of a, when you went through the process with the city, was there sort of promise, I, I'm not saying there were promises made, but what was the exchange with the city about, just got to stay?
Well, at the time, it was a, again, it was, we were told that you can, you can take it down. But to do that, there were certain requirements. You had to go into each one of the separate apartments. You had to remove plumbing that was not in a bathroom area. You had to then have it inspected by the city, you had to have it inspected by the fire department. And you had to go through this process to then downgrade it to a residential, single family home. And, and at the time, there were, you know, there was not a lot of support for, for doing that. And then we were also told, like I said earlier, that if you do do that, that you realize, if you take it down, then the most you can ever do is a duplex. You will never be able to go beyond a duplex again. So, we said, well, we're fine with that. That's what the, the city rules are. But then, then when, when this issue came up, it made me think, well, then, if that was the case, if you're voluntarily taking a property down, then why would another property be able to upzone in the same neighborhood? I mean, this is three blocks away. We're not within the 200-foot zone, but we're, we're only three blocks away from that property. So that was, that was the concern.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
If, I would like to speak, thank you, thank you. And if someone else wants to speak to you, they'll call, they'll call you up. If, if I could speak to someone, Mr. Richardson, I, you and I know each other, and I think you would probably be the best if you could have some questions for you, please?
Yes, my name is Jim Richardson. I am the current Property Committee Chairperson for Ecumenical Housing Development Group and former President of the Board.
Thank you, sir. And you and I know each other well. We've sat around the housing cluster table many times and other tables. I, I, I did go online, and I know, thank you for the work that you do in the city. You have a very good reputation, and you have acquired more properties now. When I, I went online tonight to look, and there's about 32 under the Ecumenical Housing name. And is that about correct, that about, you guys own about that many now? I know you own Horizon Homes, or what was Horizon Homes?
Yeah, so that's owned in a limited partnership, 112 units. So it's a separate entity that, what was a tax credit program back in 2007, I believe it was.
Right. So, do you own other, any of these kind of properties in any other city in Scott County?
We only own properties in Davenport.
Okay, all right. So, and I don't mean to put, I know that we're not all zoning experts, and I know you, you know, I don't expect that. But do you typically look at the zoning of properties when you're purchasing them before you purchase them? Or what is that process?
Yes, we do. In this particular instance, though, it was basically sold to us for a dollar from Family Resources. Family Resources had a problem. They wanted to unload it because it was vacant and costing them money. And Family Resources, we have a representative on our board from Family Resources. And so we made that happen. Subsequent to that, or around the same time, we were planning this low-income housing tax credit program, which would provide, as Sam said, significant dollars to be used for renovation. And so, the answer is, yes, we did look at it. But number two, we're only increasing the density by one in our request, although that the zoning would provide for certainly more than that. The Planning Commission has recommended a restriction, two restrictions, actually. One was a height restriction of 35 feet, and the other was a restriction of no more than four units. We're only planning for three. So both of those restrictions are not a, a problem for Ecumenical Housing Development Group.
So your plan right now is not to do anything to the building, but divide it up into units? Is that correct?
Yeah, so this building was built in approximately 1991. It is certainly not historic as a result of that, and would go through an entire renovation, both outside and inside. The inside being ADA accessible and three units, two four-bedroom units, and one two-bedroom unit.
But, but again, you didn't look at the zoning, so you did not look at the zoning of it. But you do, you typically look at zoning, but in this circumstance of buying this, and you didn't look at the zoning?
Not.
I guess I'm getting the point of.
We looked at it, but we didn't consider that it was going to be an issue.
Why, can I ask, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but can I ask why you didn't think it would be an issue?
Because we were only changing the density from currently two to three.
But that changes the zoning, so I guess, again, that's fine. I, I understand, I understand it's, it can be a confusing thing.
I would add that one of the properties that's in your ward, Alderman McGinnis, is being converted from a duplex to a single family home. And that address is 1031, 1031 and a half West Sixth Street.
But you understand that duplex and single family home are both allowed in R4, but?
Totally get it.
Got it, okay.
I'm just saying that we do, are, we are reducing the density on that particular unit.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it. For me, I, I will be offering an amendment next week on this proposal, and I will wait to bring that forward to the next meeting. I do think this comes down to the history of the neighborhood. It comes down to the redevelopment of the neighborhood. It comes down to the, the purpose and the focus of the rezoning that was done just a few years ago to try to restabilize these neighborhoods. I think we all here appreciate what Ecumenical Housing does for our city. We certainly appreciate what neighbors are doing for our city, for residents of the neighborhood are doing for our city as well. But I will be bringing an amendment next week for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. We'll now go to Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir. So I've listened to a lot. So these are some of the things that I've heard. Character, I would have to say I'm the character of that neighborhood, being there since 1974. So, I know my neighborhood. Do I live on that block? No. History, I would have to say I'm the history of that neighborhood. I know we all talk about our city and how much we love our city, but I love my neighborhood. When it was south of Locust and it was time to knock on doors, other aldermen didn't knock on doors on south of Locust. I was on everybody's door, and if I wasn't, my team was on south of Locust. So I'm struggling a little bit here with an opportunity. I, I can work with the duplex, I can work with the, with the triplex, whatever. But I'm struggling with the fact that I've sat on this council now going on a year, and all I've talked about was affordable housing. So I, I want to see the amendment, and I want to be able to work with you guys, but I'm, I'm not understanding why folks are, the detriment of the neighborhood. One gentleman said there was a duplex, there was a drug dealer's house. So is his drug, his duplex going to be a drug dealer's house? So you guys be careful with the words that you use, because as a long-term Fifth Ward resident, some of that stuff can sting. So just so you know, nobody wants a drug dealer's house by them. Who would stand in here if you want the dope man to live next door to you? Okay, I don't see nobody standing. Okay. So there's good people, there's bad people everywhere throughout this city. Who's that left to? That's left to the police department. That's not left to us to pick and choose. So keep judging, keep judging. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Condon?
Thank you. I believe I'll have more statements as this item moves through our process. The comment I came to mind today is that neighborhood revitalization continues to be one of the council's pillars, which means it's a top priority. And neighborhood revitalization has proven to be a tough hill to sled. There's a, there's a lot of dynamic, dynamics that need to be taken into consideration. But whatever neighborhood revitalization looks like, I don't think that we get there without neighbors like these, without people who are not following the path of least resistance, are, are choosing to invest in an area that has both promise and its challenges. So, I appreciate their sentiment. And now, there is a version of density that I can support. I don't, I don't think density is the, the only factor to take into consideration. But as we continue to try to figure out all the different dynamics of revitalization and, and also work with our partners who are really kind of focused on that same Beltway, trying to provide affordable housing, which is its own incredibly challenging problem. It, it's going to be something that we're going to have to find some tact to deal with because there's definitely a collision of good interests on both sides. Thanks.
All right, seeing no other comments, I, I do have one question for Sam or Jim, either one, whoever wants to answer. I think, I, I think I know the answer to the question, but I want to just confirm it with you. So, you could build a duplex, and you do own duplexes within your portfolio.
We do.
In this particular instance, you want to do three units. What is the reason for that?
Part of it has to do with the complexity of putting a tax, a federal tax program together. You, you have a lot of requirements to get that done. And in this, this was an opportunity to add much-needed four bedrooms as well as ADA accessible. And the math of the program, this worked really well. There were, there's a little over 3,600 square feet available inside of that, which made it ideal for a division to three nice large units. There's plenty of room for the off-street parking, and so that's pretty much the reason why it was chosen for three.
So it's, it's not, it's not related to funding structure?
It's part of that tax credit program.
Okay.
And without that unit, we would forfeit the.
All right, yeah, and that's, that's what, that's what I thought. And I, I just wanted to make sure that I'm, I'm tracking that correctly. Because, so they could do, they could do the duplex without a rezoning. But they've got the plan for a three-plex, which is just one unit above two. Everybody does the math. But by, by adding that other unit, it opens up a funding mechanism to make the, the project happen.
It does.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure that that was clearly stated. So, thank you for your time. I, I don't see any other questions. This item will stay on discussion for next week. And we will move on to item number five, which is a resolution approving the final development plan for case FDP 22-01, being the request of SCI Iowa Funeral Services, Inc. to establish a planned unit development at 1200 East 39th Street to grant an exception to allow for a reception facility under the SOS Open Space District. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this? Seeing no one, we will go to council comment. And if I, if I could start, and Laura, can I just bring you up and, and ask you? So we dealt with this issue a few months ago, and now we're just bringing back the final, the final development plan. Has anything changed from what we agreed upon a couple of months ago? We're just finalizing their development plan, is that right?
Nothing's changed, it's just fine-tuned and a little bit clearer on the expectations of, of what the city availability would be of the facility as well as nonprofit use.
Very good, that's all I want to know, thank you. All right, any comment from the council? Okay, this item will move on. And our final item, item number six, is a resolution approving a development agreement for the Martin Luther King Jr. Plaza Project. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? I'll let, seeing no one else, I'll let Mayor Mattson speak.
I, I just want to say this project's been talked about a lot. The city has been gracious in helping and assisting, but I know Mr. Sadler's in the back and doesn't, didn't want to comment, but his efforts, I just want to take a moment, say his efforts and the group's efforts to help bring this to fruition, working with a lot of people, this is a great thing for the city. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
All right, thank you. And I, I did have some comments too, obviously, big supporter of this project. I'm very happy that it is funded and moving forward. Based on what I could read in the green sheet is you've raised about $1.1 million. You're going to break ground on it this spring and hope to have it done by the summer, which would be incredible if that happens. I am sure that you are still raising money. So if people want to donate to this, you can still go to the friends of Martin Luther King Jr. and donate money to the project. And I just want to thank Dr. Sadler and all the folks who have seen this project through. I'm looking forward to having it as an addition to the Hilltop and the Downtown. Seeing no other comments on this one, I would entertain a motion to place all items, except for item number four, on the consent agenda. There's a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That concludes community development, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Next area is public safety. Alderman Jobchin and Alderwoman Dickman will discuss. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To start off public safety agenda with item number one, a first consideration ordinance amending chapter 10.96 entitled, Schedules of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by Amending Schedule 5, Four-Way Stop Intersections thereto by Adding Lombard Street at Jebbins Avenue. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, anyone from council? Seeing none there, the item will move on. Item number two, resolution approving street lane and public ground closures for the listed dates and times. I'll read all three and then ask for comment. First is River Center slash Adler Theater QC SO Symphony, day 2023, 136 East Third Street, Thursday, March 2, 2023, 8:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Closures, northernmost and center travel lanes on East Third Street from Brady Street to Iowa Street. Next, Brian Dorfeld, Easter Egg Scramble, Village of East Davenport, Saturday, April 8, 2023, 7:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Closures, beginning at 7:00 a.m., East 11th Street from Mound Street to Jersey Ridge Road, beginning at 8:00 a.m., northbound Jersey Ridge Road from East 11th Street to East Central Park Avenue, East Lombard Street from Jersey Ridge Road to Lorton Avenue, Lorton Avenue from East Lombard Street to East Central Park Avenue, East Central Park Avenue from Lorton Avenue to Jersey Ridge Road, or Jersey Ridge. And then the last item under this section is the Daquery Factory, the Central Regional CrossFit Competition, 303 West Third Street, 9:00 a.m. Friday, June 23, 2023, to 7:00 p.m. Saturday, June 24, 2023, closure, West Third Street between Ripley and Harrison Street. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. I, I know that this has come early, and I want to congratulate the Daquery Factory, first of all, and bringing this very early. I do have some questions about our policy on closure of a major street for one business. Couple of years ago, we had a business sort of further west and it was routinely closing West Third Street, and we said, we're not do, you know, we're, we're not doing this. So I, I, I don't know, it's not, it's certainly not an ordinance, but I have some questions about this. Has anyone, perhaps been in conversation with the Daquery Factory? I know they're new to the Downtown and new to the area.
So Brian handles all the special events as they come in. We don't have a policy on who can close what for what.
Okay.
They can ask you, you can say yes or no. Because it's, you know, and we actually had the same conversation about, it's the same closure as for the St. Patrick's Day Parade. And so it's, but at the end of the day, if a business wants to do an event, if a business wants to do an event, we close the East Village all the time for stuff.
I understand.
So...
The difference in my mind, St. Patrick's Day, is multiple businesses along that street and multiple events happening along the street. So I don't want to, I'm not sure where I am with this. And I don't know if there's, have, it is, does a business like this have the same requirement of going to others in the block as you would if I wanted to close my street? And so has that happened yet, or not?
I did advise Kyle from Daikery Factory to talk to all of the establishments on that street. I advised him he needs to let them know about the closure. And I can reach out to all them. I've been in contact with them quite a bit to make sure he has done that and see if any of them have any issues with it.
Okay, all right. And could you, I hate to put extra work on you. Could you do that by next week?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Alderman Condon.
Okay. I'm surprised nobody's here. I've never seen anybody miss an opportunity to talk about CrossFit. The, one of the unique things about our city layout, just for unique, or my insight, is that while we have a riverfront and a park system up there, which is second to none, it's really detached from all the businesses. So seldom do the businesses get to enjoy the momentum of all the great things that we have going on in our downtown. So I'm sensitive and generally supportive to businesses that want to close down the street so that we can get that vibrancy right there on the block face, with all consideration to the traffic that Brian...
All right. Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you. I asked yesterday about being a complete street closure, and I was told that one lane, emergency lane, is going to be left open. And I believe that's true, but I just want to make sure. So there is emergency access. Thanks.
All right. Seeing no one else, I would probably ask that that stays on discussion for next week. Moving on to item number three, motion approving noise variance requests for outdoor events on the listed dates and times. I'll read both of these and then ask for comment. First, downtown Davenport partnership, Ice Travaganza Freight House in Leclerc Park, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Friday, January 13, 2023, and 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Saturday, January 14, 2023. Outdoor music over 50 dB. And then next, the Daikery Factory, the Central Regional CrossFit Competition, 303 West 3rd Street, 4:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Friday, June 23, 2023, and 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Saturday, June 24, 2023. Outdoor music over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. And last, item number four, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. New license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area location transfer. I'll read all these items under Section A and then ask for comment. First, Brew 62, 2805 Telegraph Road, new license, license type, Class E liquor. Next, Brew 63, 3129 Rockingham Road, new license, license type, Class E liquor. Next, Neon Moon, 246 West 3rd Street, new license, license type, Class C liquor. Next, Delua on the River, 1201 East River Drive, outdoor area, new license, license type, Class C liquor. Next, Quick Star, number 123, 2850 West Locust Street, new license, license type, Class C beer. Next, Brew 67, 1136 East Locust Street, new license, license type, Class E liquor. Next, Brew 69, 303 West Locust Street, new license, license type, Class E liquor. Next, Big Ten Mart, number 185310, Corporate Park Drive, new license, license type, Class E liquor. Next, Brew 65, 201 West 53rd Street, new license, license type, Class E liquor. And then last here, Brew 66, 1670 West Kimberly Road, new license, license type, Class E liquor. And then we also have those items under Section B, which are there for your review. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these? And then before I ask for council comment, I was wondering if Attorney Hire could please give us a little update and information on the various Brew properties and then their license types?
So the Brew Mex LLC Corporation acquired the Quick Shops in Davenport. So these are not new locations. These are new licenses under a different owner. These are, previously, the Quick Shops all held basically a Class C beer, which as of January 1st is no longer available. They have to apply for either a Class B that allows for wine, beer carryout from the premises, or a Class E, which allows for everything carryout from the premises. That's why you're seeing these. Three of them are fine. The staff has no issues with them. That's the Brew 62 and 63 in Ward 1, and the Brew 67 in Ward 5. The other three Brew applications, staff has some concerns because they're all located within 600 feet of daycares, and we haven't gone through that process. So there's a chance that this could be approved by council, but we have to get the correct paperwork in line first. So when that comes up, I would suggest tabling those three and going ahead and acting on the other three.
So then, before I open it up, could we make that motion to table those three this evening?
You could.
I will open it up to council. Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin, and thanks for pointing this out and bringing it up. I appreciate it. So, Mr. Hire, could you, I wasn't aware of this. So they were Class C, which was beer and wine. That is no longer an option. So now there is Class B or Class E. B is beer or wine. I guess, is this something we're going to see at all convenience stores now? Is this something we're going to have to go through the process at all convenience stores? Okay. So when they, when they...
This is a new ownership.
Yeah, this is a new ownership. So when they go to renew, if they were a convenience store or a gas station, and they were only serving beer and wine, previously, could they have applied for a full liquor? I thought that was, it was grocery. There was a grocery component to it.
Grocery restaurant. There's a whole lot of things that are going to go into that, simply because zoning may not allow for the Class E. So it's going to depend. They can either, they can either request a one-year extension, which is available as an option, or they have to go to Class B beer and wine, or the E. But there are going to be other things that go into that determination.
Okay. I mean, I think other people will share the same concerns, but got some big concerns about liquor going into convenience stores that weren't previously selling liquor. And it sounds like I need to go get educated a little bit more on this. So if staff could provide some education materials, some places for us to look, I would appreciate it as I get spun up on it. Thank you.
Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. Is this, are these approvals required in this cycle? Let me just ask that first. Is there anything, in other words, could we, could this be tabled to our next cycle entirely without harm to these businesses or the process? So that perhaps, and the reason I'm asking that is perhaps, I feel like I need to see a table of like, what is it now? What is it, what is this particular, and what are the issues for us in terms of zoning? So that we, so I don't feel like I could make an intelligent vote, just looking at this, even if I saw the same thing next week, without more stuff.
I mean, staff, staff has vetted the three. And there isn't any issue as far as the three meeting all of our city requirements from zoning to everything else. So it would be detrimental not to consider those three during this cycle. The other three, I'm recommending be tabled, because there are issues pending.
So even if they meet all our requirements, if they're going from, you know, B to beer to liquor, I'd like to know that.
Okay.
Whether they meet our requirements or not.
All right. So the two that are in the first ward, Quick Shop actually had already upgraded, which is why they're not an issue for staff. And the other one was in the process of being upgraded and was approved by staff.
Okay. But I guess what I'm saying is I would really like to see a table of all this, because it's not, you can't, you can sit and talk to me, but I have to see it. I have to see it on a table, I think. I personally do. So I don't know, but that's just me.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir. So I am with Kyle. I need some education. Because if this means liquor in my neighborhood, I'm adamantly against more liquor in my neighborhood. So I definitely need some education on where this is going and what this looks like for the future of the fifth ward, please, and thank you.
I guess I will just, was there somebody else? Mr. Mayor? So I guess I'll just take a quick turn and ask a question of our city administrator.
Thank you. I was chimed in to talk, so perfect timing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I pushed the wrong one.
So these are all good questions. We were called into a meeting that the mayor attended with the ABD staff late last year. This, much of this, now the change of ownership aside, that's a distinct thing in this situation. This is all predicated by change in state law. So Class C is no longer an option. It's going away. And so these businesses have to pick a path. And so the concerns about liquor sales, you know, it's been of many councils, this one and before, there is a process to come before you to upgrade. To get them basically going from a C to a B is really a no change in the status to what they're doing today. So I think we could easily, by next Wednesday, have a table that very quickly shows you what you need for these six. But to Attorney Hire's point, if there are Class C holders in the city over the course of the next year, regardless of ownership status, the change is necessitated by a change in state law. So you will see more of these. And so if we can come up with a format that works as these come through, that'll be great.
And then it looks like we have Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I guess Brian or city administrator. Does Brew have a history here in Davenport, like the company itself? Are they anything that we can go off of? Do you know?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Well, definitely on this liquor issue, you know, nobody's got as many liquor licenses throughout the years as I've, you know, applied for and have gotten. And, you know, I definitely believe the city should look at everything, from building to liquor, to a number of things on a case-by-case basis, you know, the area. For example, I was called for, you said Ward 1 Brew 62, which is down on Telegraph, or, I'm sorry, the Brew 63 that's across from, the owner that, for the Smokin' Joes, that's right across the street, and then there's a Hy-Vee also. Does that convenience store sell liquor now? They were under the impression that it doesn't. But Smokin' Joes, if you allow that there, they were going to be really concerned with the three licenses in that short or small area.
So my understanding from the finance department that handles the licensing process was the location at 3129 Rockingham Road had gone through the steps for the upgrade and had passed all the city requirements. So they probably didn't sell liquor before, but they qualified.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarification. Because like I said, I'm for, you know, liquor. But that's with, you know, case-by-case, owners that have proven themselves, you know, good neighbors, you know, with restrictions. And I'm glad that the state has given the city more opportunity or powers to take away licenses that, you know, people just don't respect and is a detriment to the neighborhood. So I'll wait and find out, because I would like to see the areas. But yeah, like I said, we need to be careful, and I'll look for more information. But there, this could be a slightly concerning concern going forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Alderman Ortiz. Alderman Dunn, second time.
Thank you. So I'm just curious, what's the ramifications if we do not pass these? Can they, are they still going to be, go back to the state, and the state's going to say it's okay? Or how does that work?
Well, they're not going to, I mean, the state's not going to do anything until we do something. So there really isn't, well, their new license application. So the ramification is they just can't do what they want to do until we process this. Do we have a good reason not to process the three? That, two that were grandfathered and one that was in the process? I'm not sure that we have a good reason not to process them.
Thanks, Alderman Dunn. Alderwoman McGinnis.
One more time, I apologize. Do we feel comfortable that our requirement of not having, selling liquor within 400 feet of a daycare will stand? Is that legal?
We're fine there.
Okay.
It's a zoning issue.
And then Mayor Mattson.
Thank you for letting me speak. As Ms. Spiegel said, we had a talk. And we expressed our concern strongly about the change and what it would mean. But the bottom line was, we have more control. They, not speaking for them in any way, understood that it was important, at least the state believed it was important to give, which is unusual thing, more local control. And the bottom line that I kept saying is, no matter how you change it or what path you do, it still comes to the city council for approval. And the ABD, at least from my perspective or reading it, wanted that more. And at least the chairman, any issues we have is happy to take my phone call. So the concern from anyone is here, and they wanted that. So that, I just wanted to say that. If Ms. Spiegel thinks I said that wrong, then nope, okay. So you had...
Alderman Grip.
Thank you for a second opportunity to talk. So obviously, I'm going to get schooled up a little bit more on this between now and next week. But if liquor license owners are being forced to choose between staying with beer and wine, but getting a different designation, or going to liquor, and we approve all of the liquor, or start approving the liquor, we start to approve, start the precedent that, yes, we're going to approve you all to liquor. I think that's a very dangerous precedent to start, especially considering the position we've taken on this over the last probably five or six years. So I want to be very cautious about doing that and making sure that if we have the authority to make these decisions, that we take that opportunity and protect our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Alderman Dunn.
Thank you. I'm just curious, are there going to be requirements of how much they can sell, based on square footage like we do a lot of places? Or just going to be, they now have a liquor license, they can sell as much as they want?
The zoning restrictions will not have changed. So they likely would, I mean, they likely would. The zoning restrictions haven't changed. So if they, if they're in C1, they still have to meet those restrictions. It's capped at... I mean, that's what you're asking, correct?
See, what's going to be allowed and what zones...
Right.
It's kind of different. So I guess, do a little research.
That'll be, that'll be part of the information that we get to you guys between now and the next meeting.
Alderman Kelly.
Can I elaborate on that a little bit, Dunn? Is he, because so when I go to some of these Quick Shops, the liquor is behind the counter. So is it going to go from behind the counter to now there's a liquor aisle? You know what I'm saying?
The zoning restrictions that we have in the code are still valid zoning restrictions. So if they fall within those parameters, it will still be behind the counter.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. And I guess I'll take a crack at, at something. So just again, to clarify for me, so these, these Brew Mex LLC locations, except for the one that was already grandfathered in, the way they currently operate would fall under Class B as it's, the law is rewritten, correct? Am I tracking that correctly? Or do they, if they maintain their current operation, would that default them into Class E?
The three that staff have vetted, two that are grandfathered, one that had gone through the process and been approved are Class E.
Okay, okay. So, so again, like you mentioned, that really, I mean, it wouldn't, wouldn't change. They don't have the option to kind of, we were talking about down zoning, up zoning, not like downgrade the Class B, because they're already there at Class E license type.
They could do that. We can't impose that.
Okay, okay. Now, then the other one here, so then, am I comparing apples and oranges? So one's kind of sliding under the radar here, just making sure we're tracking okay. So in Ward 6, Big Ten Mart, at 5310 Corporate Drive, Class E liquor, are they kind of doing the same thing? Are they changing? Is this someone that's selling beer and wine currently that's going to potentially be selling liquor as well?
That I don't have the information to answer, but we'll get that information to you before Wednesday.
Maybe for brevity this evening, when we set the agenda, I'll ask that all the Brew Mex LLC items and the one in Ward 6, Big Ten Mart, be just left on discussion, and then we can get information, hash it out, and table what we're going to table, and deny what we're going to deny, and all that next week. And so with that, seeing I think nobody else, all right, I would ask Alderman Dickman to please set the agenda.
I move that all items be tentatively placed on consent as outlined by Alderman Jogen.
Except for the discussion.
Except for the items on discussion as outlined. Jury for discussion.
We have a motion. And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? That closes public safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jogen and Alderman Dickman. Next area is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution approving the specifications form of contract and estimated cost of the CY 2023 pedestrian curb retrofit program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution adopting the final assessment schedule for the FY 2021 alley resurfacing program in accordance with the alley cost share program and amending, confirming, and levying the assessments. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution adopting the final assessment schedule for the FY 2022 stream bank stabilization cost share program project at West 62nd Street and North Elmwood Avenue and amending, confirming, and levying assessments. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution awarding a contract for the 66th Street Storm Sewer Extension Project to AmeriCorps LLC of Bluegrass, Iowa in the amount of $159,717.90. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding a contract for the Kelling Street Sump Pump Abatement Project to AmeriCorps LLC of Bluegrass, Iowa in the amount of $149,882. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding a contract for the South Marquette Street Public Works Building Sanitary Sewer Separation Project to Central Escavating Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa in the amount of $169,989. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution awarding a contract for the River Center Electrical Upgrades to Tri-City Electric Company of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $316,720. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution introducing the proposed resolution on necessity covering the FY 2023 alley cost share program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution accepting work completed on the assessment for the 2022 commercial alley resurfacing program in accordance with the alley cost share program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution accepting work completed and an assessment for the 2022 residential alley resurfacing program in accordance with the alley cost share program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 11 is a resolution accepting work completed under the CY 2022 sidewalk program by Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities Incorporated of Moline, Illinois in the amount of $202,629.5. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 12 is a resolution accepting work completed under the CY 2022 city property sidewalk program by Centennial Contractors in the amount of $153,966.8. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number 13 is a resolution accepting work completed under the West 76th Street east of Hancock Court to Division Street Extension Project completed by Valley Construction of Rock Island, Illinois in the amount of $3,851,945.19. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I would love to. I'd like to make a motion that all items move on to the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. And that will conclude public works for this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Just add a little caveat, a lot of money accepted today, and a lot of payments we did on a lot of project streets and others. So just pay attention. Out there, not you guys. Next area is finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Three items on finance this evening. Item number one is a resolution setting a public hearing for the fiscal year 2024 proposed maximum property tax levy rate and amount. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number one? Counsel? Item number one will move on. Item number two is a resolution adopting the City of Davenport's 2023 state legislative program. Anyone from the public wishing to address item number two? Counsel? Number two will move on. And finally, item number three. Motion approving a four-year collective bargaining agreement between City of Davenport and the Union of Professional Police, Inc. of Davenport, Iowa for the term beginning July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2027. Anyone from the public wishing to address item number three? Counsel? And item number three will move on. Below on your agenda, you'll see purchases from 10,000 to 50,000. We won't read each of those individually, but they're there for your information. Alderman Cornet, would you please set our agenda?
Thank you, Alderman Condon. I move that all items be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That concludes finance. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Cornet. And I just want to say thank you to our staff and the police union for a good faith and wonderful negotiations. Appreciate a four-year contract. That's a great thing. All right. Next, is there any other ordinances, resolutions, and motions? I see none. Any public with business, please come to the podium. We'd love to know your name, order, address. If you're not here, we'd love to know where you are from. And five minutes, please, for things not already discussed on the agenda.
Ron Swinter, Davenport, Rock Island, Eldridge, and Otomo. I've kind of had to expand after last year in this council. Wow. We had a one-way system that never should have passed. We had a definite conflict interest, but no one seems to care. We have numbers thrown out there that, according to the mayor, we don't have a game plan yet. We have projects a million, $2 million over. Are we being fiscally responsible to the taxpayers? No. It's going to be interesting watching this as it goes forward. How many millions of dollars this council, the privilege five plus one, stuck the taxpayers for? It's going to be real interesting. And for the others, I have a great deal of respect. And, you know, when you have a conflict, you excuse yourself. In my book, I was raised, your word is your bond. You're held to a higher standard as you sit on this council or as mayor. Thousands of voices were silenced. A survey was done of downtown, couple thousand people. We spent more money, more money, more money. This council represents the city as a whole, Alderman at large as a whole. I think we need, as taxpayers and as citizens, to take a strong, hard look at the upcoming year. I think this council needs to take a hard look, and that's my opinion and many others I've spoken with. For, to put the taxpayers on the hook for what you did is just irresponsible. Paint and signage, especially when it's brought up eight blocks, millions of dollars to make it safe and better. It's going to be very interesting. This ain't the last you'll hear from me on this. I will continue. And it'll be interesting to hear the explanation of when we go to 10 million, 15 million, $20 million because of the intersections at River Drive, how they have to be reworked, the millions of dollars it's going to cost, the fact that signage ain't going to do it, the aging of the street light, or the traffic signals, all having to be updated. I'm very disappointed in this council, very. I ran for Alderman for four and a half weeks. I lost by 130 votes. Not bad. That should tell you something. People are watching, hopefully the next election. People that were silencing their vote, that didn't seem to count, or their opinion, we take the duct tape off and make things for the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Spiegel, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned. Have a wonderful evening. Have a great day in this great city.